You are watching XS Laporte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four regular meeting of the Laporte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot XS Laporte County dot org.
Going to call the Laporte County Council meeting for January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four to order. If everybody please stand for the pledge, turn off your phones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and free from all.
Role call, please.
Councilman Yagowski. Councilman Keel. Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Mullinhour.
Present.
And Councilman Karanka.
Present.
All seven are present.
Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make the following adjustments to the agenda. On page three, under the Port County Prosecutor, I'd like to remove the second item. Uh, just below that, the Port County Building Maintenance, I'd like to remove that item.
Hey, slow down, slow down.
That includes all three sub items, you mean, right?
It includes what?
It's all one for the nine thousand four hundred and eighty two.
The three items, yeah.
Yes, three.
The next item?
The next item was the Port County Building Maintenance for a thousand eleven. On page four, I'd like to remove all the items that total one hundred and twenty six dollars under the Port County Community Corrections.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Yagowski, are there any other questions or comments?
Would Mr. Rosenbaum please explain his purpose for removing those items?
Yes, because we've got a whole year to adjust the payroll and to start um designating funds on the very first meeting of the year is um, I wouldn't say would be the best financial decision for us when we're trying to preserve all our cash. And there's a possibility that during the year, somebody may resign, quit, retire. And by the time we hire somebody else, we may have recovered those funds.
Does the Auditor's Office agree with this uh this approach?
It doesn't matter what the Auditor's Office.
He's asking.
This does to me, it determines how I vote.
It's not about disagreeing, but I will tell you if the prosecutor has hired a an inspector, there are no payroll taxes that are currently appropriated for it. Building maintenance can wait.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the payroll taxes are all in a general fund. It's not in, it's not, it's individual, it's per employee.
It's not per employee, but per the fund that it comes from, so when it's.
So that's a unique fund, in other words? That's what you're saying, that investigator is in a zone fund?
The investigator was approved out of public safety, correct.
And there's no other prosecutors coming out of public safety let?
So if we were to remove this, if not appropriate, that funding, we would be unable to.
If it's already been hired, you'd be already negative in that, yes.
So we need to reconsider that one.
Mr. Rosenbaum?
I'm thinking about it.
To reconsider that?
I'm thinking about it, not that quick of an answer.
Got it, thank you.
We will leave it on the tape, we'll add it back in.
Alright, so he amended his.
Okay.
Alright. So is, anybody have any other comments or questions regarding this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes, the first one is the November twenty seventh, twenty twenty three.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, second by Mr. Cunningham. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is our December eleventh special meeting.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Yagowski, is there any questions? Comments or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is our January eighth reorganizational meeting.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Karanka. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is public comment, anybody from the public would like to speak? State your name.
Good evening.
Your address.
Steve Hollowfield, six, seven, eight, two east, one hundred south, I got the, I got it down.
I know, you know the route.
Uh, couple things I'd like to bring to your attention, one, Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Novak, I spoke to you about these additional appropriations, and you explained briefly, they're not really additional appropriations. Um, then.
The majority of.
The majority, yes, I I think the news media needs to know what's being done here. And the other thing is, I don't know if any of you are aware, I spoke with a couple of you, and I spoke with all three commissioners, there's a twenty six hundred acre solar farm being proposed north of me. Now, a lot of people in the neighborhood are concerned about this. It's two things there, one, it's a private property issue, completely understand when someone wants to do with their land, I completely understand, but it also affects all the people around it. And the majority of the people going into this solar farm do not live within the county. So, I don't know if they're going to approach you guys for a tax abatement or not. They've been so far, they've been very slow and very vague, I'm not even sure it'll happen in twenty four. But I would like to say that if they approach you for a property tax abatement, you guys say no, because there's no job creation in this at all for both side and jobs and everything. So I I'll bring additional information as I get it for you guys, and I just hope you consider that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else, public comment? Anybody else who'd like to speak under public comment, anybody on Zoom? Public comment. Anybody on Zoom? Public comment, closed. Next item, department head report, any department heads?
Connie Gramarosa, President of the Commission, I just have a question for you guys. Um, it's my understanding that twenty two thousand dollars was paid to thirteen employees out of incentive money last month. Now, usually watch or listen to your meetings, and I don't know when that was appropriated for thirteen employees out of the four D.
I can answer that, Ms. Gramarosa.
Okay.
Uh, I did review the issue, uh, the council does not appropriate out of those federal funds, there's a specific statute uh and a specific regulation from the federal that Mr. Fagan can use that money in order to bonus people when they collect more child support revenue. So it was clearly statutory, and the council does not need to appropriate those funds. I did look into that issue.
So they can pull it out of the two hundred account and put it into the one hundred.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know about what accounts they're in, but I'm, and that would be something that you'd have to bring up with the Auditor's Office, but the actual uh monies are not appropriated by the council.
So then my other question is, if we can pay bonuses out of that account, is there any way that we can pay the Maximus bill? So we get a bill at the Commissioner's Office for eleven thousand two hundred dollars. And last year, we didn't have the money to pay for that, so what we had to do was we had to pay it out of our professional services.
I I can, I can answer that issue also, and I did speak with Mr. Fagan about that, and we're looking at that, if it's all specifically used for four D, there might be a a way to do it, but I haven't received that information yet, but I know that that was brought up last month, and I am discussing that with Mr. Fagan, whether it'll meet the requirements of the federal law. And so we're looking at it.
Okay, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Good evening.
Fagan, Laporte County Prosecutor. Let me tell you some of the great things we're doing with four D. I believe I sent an email to you, to Mr. Uh.
De Martino.
And. Karanka about some of the great things that our four D program is doing. Our four D program last year in uh, we're measured by certain federal and state benchmarks done by budget year. So we have two different budget years, the federal budget year, which runs October, October, and then the state budget year, which runs June to July to July, basically. So in twenty twenty three, uh on both, we're measured by uh four different categories. It's colloquially known as the Christmas tree, so bad performance, red, meets expectations, yellow, improve or satisfactory and above, green. On the federal side of measurements, we scored two greens, two yellows, so we met or exceeded on the four categories that were measured for incentive funds. On the state level, we satisfied four green categories, that's the first time, if you ask Tracy Tillman, a respected member of the community in Michigan City, longtime employee of my four D department for the last thirty years, or Barry McDonald, longtime employee, director of my program, both having thirty, a long institutional memory of what our performance has been with child support. That's the first time nearly maybe fifteen, twenty years that we have met or exceeded, done that well on those performance measures. So uh, so I think these are all great things that our our four D program is doing, we've had record collections. We uh, we actually, as I notified members, some members of the council, we actually had an audit done by the state where they randomly picked about twelve to fifteen different cases uh regarding compliance, certain kinds of measures that they do. We scored a hundred percent on those measures, we did that last year, we did that this year. Our four D program, child support, is one of uh the best in the state, and that's just not, I mean, it's self-serving for me to say that, but these are um, these are verifiable numbers. In certain counties, you have what's called the big six, you have Marion Lake, Elkhart, Saint Joe, uh Vanderburg County, and a number of other counties, where our performance is measured against those counties. In certain categories, we beat Saint Joe, we beat Porter. In other categories, we beat other bigger counties on certain things, so we are doing great things with our four D program, because having families do child, pay child support, strengthens families, and overall, it helps, it has a very, a very impact, very, excuse me, it has an impact on public safety. So when we have strong families, strong communities, you know, where kids are fed, kids have, parents have money for their children to satisfy their basic needs, health insurance is one of the things that we help enforce, these are things that help and strengthen Laporte County, and this makes people want to move here, instead of wanting to to go to Porter, or want to go to Saint Joe, or go to Stark or Marshall, it helps people want to be here in this county. So, we are doing great things with our four D program, that's, I know it's, it's me saying that, but these are actionable, verifiable numbers that we can use, so thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Department heads now closed, liaison reports, we'll start down there with Mr. Cunningham.
I'll pass this evening. I'll pass.
Pass. Mr. Mullinhour?
Yeah, I just have two things, uh, January fifth, I think most of you received a notice that retirement, they had a little ceremony for EMA Assistant Director Fran Tibbett, and she'd been, I'm not sure how many years she was with the county, but a long time, and um, she's uh, I don't know, she was just a terrific employee and a good person, and just wanted to congratulate her that, on her, on her retirement. And on January tenth, I attended the solid waste district meeting, and that's all I have right now.
I'll pass this evening.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm pulling back, I forgot to talk about the RDC. Uh, we have been working diligently on the railroad and putting in some switching station. Once a switching station becomes active, we now have access to the internal part of the KOP, or KIP, whichever one you like to use. That is supposed to be happening by the middle of February, that is uh allowing us for a lot of economic activity of companies wanting to come into our community and look at building facilities with um, with the, not just solar farms, with real jobs, four hundred jobs one, two hundred up, two hundred jobs another, and so we're getting special interest from that. Because one station is going, we now have interest from another railroad to put in the switching station on the other side of the park. And also, we get paid for every time a car goes over the switching station. So, we now have a potential generation of money coming from that, from that rail activity. So that is something that's very strong, very powerful, and we already know that Love's has already opened up on four twenty one.
Um, I'll try and keep it brief, the complex construction meeting, so every Monday we meet regarding the complex, uh just so that everybody in the public knows, the fifth floor should be finished at the end of February. Um, I took some new pictures, the carpets down, the walls are painted, the ceilings are in, they're just finishing up some things in there. Um, and then each month after that, the fourth floor, the third floor will be completed, the sheriff's office will be completed at the end of this month. Um, had attended a Purdue extension meeting, met with the Michigan City Coast Guard and the Michigan City Fire Department regarding, uh, everybody knows about the issues with the Coast Guard, with cutting the staff, not not cutting the staffing, having staffing issues, they're having trouble finding people. Uh, so they're gonna be, have less hours, but meeting with the fire department, try and get grants there, so they can get a fire boat, and then uh the Spongy Moth met several times, and we had a workshop on that. Any correspondence?
No.
Next item is ordinances and resolutions, first item is ordinance twenty twenty three dash one two.
Mr. President, make a motion to read the ordinance number twenty twenty three dash twelve by title only.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum to read by title only, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
This is an ordinance adopting county of Laporte, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies.
Thank you, it's your pleasure.
Mr. President, I can make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty three dash twelve, as read.
Motion by Yagowski, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Mullinhour. Any questions or comments?
Discussion, yes, um, I'm wondering under building maintenance, the salary for Mr. Fitzpatrick dropped, the the director of building maintenance dropped ten thousand dollars, can we explain what happened there?
His fee, his, so FMEC, Fairground Management Event Corporation subsidizes that with ten thousand dollars, so his actual fee budgeted by the council is the sixty six, and then it's the ten thousand dollars from, how much? Sixty seven? And then it's the ten thousand dollars from there coming over from FMEC, so we have to send it over.
So FMEC is going to continue to pay that ten thousand dollar portion of the salary?
Unless you'd like to. Is that a motion?
Any change?
Is that a motion?
I'm just asking if that's what FMEC intends to do.
That's our intention at this time for this year, yeah.
And so, do they plan to pay it through the county or or pay it themselves?
We sent, we sent a check to the Auditor's Office? No, it comes out of, it comes out, it doesn't come out of county infrastructure money. It comes out of money.
When we, when there's revenue that comes in and we're doing the salary ordinance, this is the authorization for us to pay that amount, so when payroll is making their, you know, payrolls, when they're preparing payroll, they're going to be paying out an amount equal to sixty seven thousand dollars divided by the number of payroll periods, not seventy seven, so he would be receiving ten thousand.
So then that, then probably needs to be changed then.
Comment? Was it voted on at the FMEC meeting, at the first meeting? Because I'm not sure everybody agrees with that, now that we have to pay eighteen thousand dollars more for having um Laporte um project management oversee the projects. So that's what happened last year.
It was talked about, it was talked about at our first meeting, yeah.
Well, so. Problem was that a year ago, eighteen thousand dollars was paid to Laporte's um project management to oversee projects out there, and Mr. and Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Right, no disrespect, those are, those are two, two separate items.
Mr. Keel?
Those are two separate items.
Are there also other employees in the same situation who are getting paid from other sources that are not?
The IT director, the IT director is at the correct page, but we still send a check over for that, though.
Right, but I'm I'm just wondering if.
Right, so why wouldn't that?
This is just the one that I noticed.
Well, why wouldn't it, then?
What about, what about Mr. Bishop?
RDC.
Isn't correct to what's going to be approved next month? But for what it's being paid right now, it's correct, for Mr. Bishop.
Anyway, well, so.
Currently listed incorrectly.
It's currently listed incorrectly.
That it's coming out of the um.
The source is listed incorrectly, but the amount is listed.
The amount is correct.
The amount, including the ten thousand dollars that's coming from another source.
The source is correct as of today.
No, 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 yeah, I'm not talking about the source, I'm talking about the money. Mr. Keel asked, said that Sean's number on the ordinance should be ten thousand dollars more. I'm just asking, for some of those, for some of those other employees, are we in the same situation?
It's a good question.
I don't know, I I'm just asking.
Mr. Yagowski.
And the same thing, excuse me, same thing applies for grants, because those are not listed, so.
And I had, I had that discussion with the prosecutor, because I had questions regarding some of his grant funds, and I was unable to get an understanding, because he's still, and so, is that included on the ordinance or not?
This is going to be read twice, Mr. Mr.
You've already, you already.
We already did it once. So, so here's, here's the thing, the council had voted two years ago to, for the, for the maintenance director to receive that extra money from FMEC, so that has already been put in place, so that should be reflected in there.
The problem, I think, is it wasn't paid last year by FMEC.
But they had the money in their account to do it.
So the county paid him that ten thousand.
They paid it there, right.
Received the ten thousand dollars.
This year, we haven't been told it was approved, so it hasn't been added to the salary ordinance for his, but all of the other ones were approved through the depart, through the departments with the grants that they're using.
Yeah, and I'm just asking, you know, just since Mr. Keel brought that up.
Absolutely, except for his.
It'll be approved.
Okay, so is somebody going to amend that line item?
Once we get a notice of it, we will do that in the office and then let the council know.
Then we're going to have to amend the whole salary ordinance.
We can amend it here, this is an appropriation, it's a.
Oh, yes. Can we get, can we get a motion to amend that line item?
To reflect the salaries that they're receiving?
I'm make, I will stand with my correction, my motion to amend it with the salaries that are stated.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Cunningham, for the amendment, all those in favor, say aye.
Further, aye.
Well, go ahead.
We're voting on the amendment, then.
Correct, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
One nay, alright, now on the motion, is there any other questions or comments?
For the questions, so did FMEC pay the ten thousand dollars that it was contributing towards the total salary last year?
No.
Correct.
So is this a breach of FMEC's obligation to?
It's not a breach, there's, there's no breach of anything, the council approved them giving the money to them. So, there was a, there was an issue with between maintenance and FMEC last year out there at the fairgrounds, so.
So does FMEC plan to pay it?
Yes, that's what I'd say, I already stated that.
You're talking.
For last year?
Last year.
We're not paying it last year, they they took it out of their budget, maintenance paid it out of their budget. Took care of it out of their budget.
How were they able to do that?
Here's the thing, here's the thing you got to understand, FMEC oversees the fairgrounds that the fair board, that the fair, that the county owns, so maintenance, we're, we're helping out by subsidizing that person's pay for work they do out at the fairgrounds. Last year, there was some confusion and things weren't handled quite the way that we wanted them to, so it never got appropriated last year. So to say that we're here to subsidize, and it shouldn't come out of county funds, that's county property, every one of those is a county building, so maintenance, we shouldn't have to be subsidizing it, but we are. So this year, we're planning on to do it, last year with the new director coming in, there were some issues, and that's why it wasn't paid.
Yeah, I bring it up because, you know, Mr. Fitzpatrick's salary is only four thousand dollars more than the next.
As it sits, the sixty six.
At sixty seven, correct.
I agree.
Um, I think we believe in making sure that it's a fair pay, and so that's why I'm bringing it up. Uh, it also changed without us having any discussion about it changing, which is.
We, we talked about this during budget.
About a lowering?
Yes.
Didn't recall that.
Alright, because of adjusting it to the fair board.
It was very clearly discussed, you can go back and listen to tapes.
The I, now here's the thing, the IT director's salary was adjusted, the maintenance director's salary was not adjusted. So why, during budget hearings, I'm not sure why we did one and not the other, but that's what it was done, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So the amendment is gonna show that ten thousand dollars extra, seventy seven thousand dollars?
Correct.
God, thank you.
And and as well as Mitch's will reflect the correct one.
It already.
I think Darling does.
It already has.
But the source is wrong, alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh one.
Motion to approve. Oh, sorry, motion to read by title only first, sorry.
Well, are you going to do it in two readings or one reading?
You want to suspend?
But so, the first thing is to motion to suspend the two reading rule?
That, that's typically the way we do.
Then I'll make a motion to suspend the two reading.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Yagowski to suspend the rules, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Now, motion to read by title only?
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, title only.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka, any questions?
Yeah, well, let me just explain this, so, so this is uh, this is an ordinance that just goes ahead and follows the statute, so the Juvenile Services Center can actually get their money budgeted, so they don't have to come back for repeated appropriations for things within the program.
This is a program that's been in place for several years.
Many years.
Which is just an ordinance to tighten it up?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Actually, one.
This is, this is on, this is to read by title only, isn't it, are we still on that?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, so we should do the title only first.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Now, is there a motion to approve?
This is a ordinance establishing the Juvenile Services NOVA Fund.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Motion by Rosenbaum and Yagowski, on the question.
On the question. Director Deon, two men. Thank you, Director Campbell, um, I know there's a lot of things we talked about earlier on in the year with budgets and everything else, I just want to make sure it's perfectly clear, so this ordinance and these funds are not the DCS funds that are associated with the per diem uh DCS uh, say, housing of, for placement.
Completely different.
Okay. Because that was a fairly large bit of revenue last year and just.
Completely different.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Hold business, reconsider the following tabled item from previous meeting, the Laporte County Regional Sewer Board.
Motion to take it off the table.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Karanka to take it off the table, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion, it's off the table. What's your pleasure? I don't know, I don't know, we need to hear, I mean, you're more than welcome to come up, but I.
Just in case you have questions.
I'll make a motion for one point five million dollars to go for the Hudson-Sogany Lake Projects with two conditions, one, that no dollar be spent, that this is to be used as matching funds, if no other funds can be found, that this gets returned, and two, that we have a deadline of October thirty first to use the funds.
There's a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Karanka, any other questions or comments?
ARP.
Mr. Yagowski.
You know, I made myself clear, I'm not opposed to this sewer project like I was with Rowan Prairie, but we also had some other ideas that came about to help out for the future of what we're going to do for other areas. Ie example that Rowan Prairie had some skin in the game, that if they built it, they would pay so much back to return the money back, so that we would get this money back, so we could go for other projects. There's a project starting here in Long Beach here, so is this going to be the first one gets it, and nobody else gets it? Or because Long Beach is right behind them, I'm not saying that they deserve it more than the other project does. And I know there's a few other areas out there, which we've talked with some of the people, and we know where they're all at. So this is not, is this going to be, okay, first come, first served, through the money, why now we don't have it no more? That's my question, and the second one of this is that, if you're going to do a project like this, like I said, that if you put some skin in the game, at least you get some money to return investments, so that we can future plan other projects that go out through that, like we did with Rowan Prairie.
Just, thank you, Mr. Yagowski.
With the use of the river, or the um.
Did they?
ARP funds.
No, they're here.
Um, would we have that opportunity, though, for the, for those individual?
I don't think they're gonna, I don't think he's going to be able to answer that, but.
No.
I think, I think the question is, i- if, if a repay, if a, any type of a repayment or any kind of a return of funds on this with the ARP funds, this is, this is all lost revenue anyway. But this is, this is all lost revenue anyway, so it doesn't matter.
It's not.
There's no restrictions.
But, but based on the prior, um, conversation that came in and presentation, this is such a small sliver of their $40 million project. I don't even know that that is something that, that's something you want to discuss with them.
Well, more along the lines of if we had the ability or the mechanism to be able to collect back on further projects that come from ARP funds versus other regulation, you know, non-regulated.
If we did not spend this money tonight, where would that money go to?
Uh, I don't know. It'll have to be earmarked by the end of 2024.
Correct.
Even the, even the lost revenue?
Yeah, I'm, I'd have to look at that, but.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham.
Uh, the truth of the matter right now, that 1.5 million is equivalent to the general fund. Because there's no restrictions on it. We don't have any restrictions on how we spend it. So he's exactly right. We have to, if we're going to spend ARP money, we have to spend it by the end of '26, but we have to appropriate it by the end of this year.
Have to commit, yeah.
Say, we have to commit to it.
Yep.
And I've spoken with Mr. Jones and others. I 100% support this kind of thing, and I think that's what ARP money was actually devised for. They love in the ground money. But the truth of the matter is, we, we were looking down the barrel of a 1% operating balance on our general fund. And to spend 1.5 million at this time and not know that we're going to have 1.5 million extra money toward the end of next, end of this year is kind of a scary proposition to me.
Very much so. Any other questions or comments?
I did have one. And the reason why I asked you to come up, so if we were to try and say that this is a loan instead of a, a matching, that would prohibit you from getting some other funding, would that not? I'm sorry, it sounds like it's a leading question, but.
Over the last three years, uh, in, you know, and especially since the ARP fund, the ARP funds were allocated by the federal government to, to local entities like yourself. The state revolving loan fund has taken the position that, um, the ARP funds needs to be part of the package for funding a project. So in the last two years at least, we've had several jurisdictions that have made this very same move. It, to, to actually, uh, consider the ARP allocation to the regional sewage district as a loan really doesn't help them because it will translate to a higher rate for the customers that we have planned in Phase One project. So, yes, the 1.5 is considered leveraging with the state of Indiana. And they will certainly ask and, and they, their, their goal is to try to subsidize as much as they can, but they're also looking for the local entity to participate. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Approximately how much leverage do you see that 1.5 garnering?
We are, we are, um, asking for 5 million. We believe the project certainly qualifies for that level of subsidization.
Thank you.
A question on, um, so this project is being divided into three phases, correct? Do you anticipate needing additional council funding for phases two and three?
We'd sure take it if you had it. I'm not sure you'll have it. So we're, we're, uh, we're mining every possible opportunity. So.
I'm supportive of, of doing something for the first round. I'm a little bit more skeptical about being on the line for future funding commitments.
I.
It's not in your current budget that you would be coming back to us.
No, we, 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 we don't have any plans to return to the council. We, we understand that, uh, your, your annual funds are spoken for. In this case, um, this distribution from the federal government was used in multiple jurisdictions for this very same purpose, and that was the reason for the ask.
Yeah, I will commend you guys for the, the work that you've done in this process of being very attentive to asking questions continually, trying to get on the agenda and being on top of this. Understand what it takes to push a large infrastructure project like this forward, and you guys have put in a lot of hard work and it doesn't go unnoticed.
And it is a substantial project. We have several board members here tonight and they've worked especially hard on advancing this project, so. They deserve, they deserve the accolades, that's for sure. So.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Think to counter a little bit to our, uh, Councilman Cunningham was going, we do have to consider the short game, which is where that 1.5 could go in the general fund. The other step part is, is we got to think about the long game as well, which would be the added funds that come with the additional development that would occur as a result of this project.
Especially in that area.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one more. Such type of service being applied in an area allows for growth of additional homes or residences and even businesses into those areas as well. So this allows for growth and a county doesn't just become super better without some growth. And so this gives us that opportunity. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Any other? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Which fund? Is ARP?
What?
ARP.
Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Five to two.
Five to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Next item is confirm the council's 2024 council meeting dates. If you, I think there was some communication, May 29th, we needed to move to that date because the date we originally moved it to was.
The room was not available.
The room was not available. So it was Memorial Day and then we moved it to Tuesday. Now we're.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
You tell me where.
Do you need a motion to approve that change?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve that change.
Second.
Motion by Rosenbaum, second by Karanka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. New business. Approve council president's authorization to hire replacements for Lepore County Prosecutor as an investigator in a victim's advocate position.
To approve.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion by Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham.
These are all available. I'm sorry, good question. Are these all to fill jobs?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to do all three of them?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Highway Administrative Specialist.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is Community Corrections Field Officer Position.
Motion to approve.
Rosenbaum.
Second.
Karanka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next item is a, consider a motion of support regarding this control of spongy moth not to exceed, it's not written on there, but it's not to exceed $40,000. Is what this is, is the, uh, State Representative Pressle right now is working downstate to gather funding to help, um, this would be a match to what he is doing. Obviously, if there is no state funds, we're not going to be able to do it. So they just, the people downstate just need a motion of support, um, for this item.
Is there a financial consideration?
$40,000.
Sorry if I missed it. I'll make a motion of support not to exceed $40,000 regarding the control of spongy moth.
From what fund?
We just said a motion of support. We didn't start discussing what fund, but if you need a fund.
We can't do.
I, I don't think we can.
The reason I ask is because when we do motions of support, but we don't commit it to a certain fund, then later it becomes clear how, how much has already been committed out of a certain fund. We don't know then.
We're not going to know later on, but I understand.
We won't know until it comes up.
So gets there. We're not even going to money the fund.
We don't even know that it's going to happen.
It still has to be voted on. It still has to be appropriated.
Yeah.
Most likely to be appropriated by the state too, right? Because this is going to be a match.
That's, that's going to happen first, so. So motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Consider liaison assignments. There's two corrections to the list that was handed out. The insurance committee would be, um, myself, Adam and Mike Rosenbaum. And then the personnel committee is Adam and Mike Rosenbaum. With that said.
Motion to approve the liaison?
Wait, you say Personnel Committee?
Yes.
Adam and, you said Mike Rosenbaum?
Yes.
I got, I got me on here.
I, I, I said there are two corrections.
Okay.
Two corrections.
Thank you.
Is that a second, Mike?
Wait, that'll work.
A second? Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenauer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Do you have those two corrections?
I believe so. Did you say for insurance committee, Mike, Adam and Randy? Mike Rosenbaum?
Adam and Rosenbaum. And then Personnel Committee, Adam and Rosenbaum. I'm, the reason.
Nope, good.
Saying that because there's a mic down the other end too, so, all right. Appropriations, transfers and requests, there are none. I wish. Moving on to Lepore County Health Department. The first item is request appropriation from County Health Department Fund for $54,140. This is money within their fund. So this is not an additional appropriation. This is money, one of their grants that they received. So this is their money.
It's equivalent to a transfer.
Correct. It's, it's, it's budgeting the money.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rosenbaum, second by Cunningham. Is there any other questions or comments? On that one?
Is this a forecasting sort of transfer, just strategic for later in the year? Or is this something that we're looking to incur?
Is this a housekeeping thing?
This is because the council is, um, the council has to approve their appropriations.
Correct.
And it wasn't done through, through the budget process?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next items. The councils received these items, one through 12. These are all funds that the health department has that I've asked, um, Rhonda to put into budget sheet forms and they will be added to our next budget when we have the health department, correct?
If she can, yes. As long as she knows the amounts by then.
Correct, but I mean, we'll be, right. But that's what we're approving, the sheets.
Yes.
So if you want to do them one at a time, or if you want to do them all one through 12?
Collectively?
Collectively?
Hmm, all 12 together. Motion to approve.
One through 12?
One through 12.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any questions on those? These are all grant funds and different funds that she has for.
And some of them are going away that, um, Health First in Indiana has replaced, so not all of these will be seen again.
But we're just creating it so we have it.
Correct.
Right. Just put them in budget form. So we have it.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, EMA requesting appropriation. This is the same thing. We're appropriating the funds that they have, they receive in their grant. $127,090. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Karanka, second by Mullenauer. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Thanks for stopping by, Ross. Lepore County Surveyor requesting appropriation to establish a budget for the previously non-budgeted fund. And this is the surveyor's corner perpetuation fund. And I believe, is this what you handed out tonight too? So this is, um, in history, the, the surveyor comes to each meeting at the beginning of the year and asks for his money to be appropriated out of his fund. And we usually do that, and that's exactly what we're doing here. It's so that he can spend that money throughout the year on whatever items he needs to do. There's a list of items that he has, that he can, he's restricted to, so.
Not that you can see it, but.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is the Lepore County Drainage Board requesting appropriation from the General Drainage Improvement Fund, 1158, for services charged in the amount of 74,253.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Again, this is out of the Drainage, General Drain Improvement Fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is the Lepore County Prosecutor, Prosecutor Requesting Additional Appropriation from Riverboat Wind Tax. Now, this is an additional appropriation for equipment for a new server, uh, for the new email server in the prosecutor's office. Mr., you want to weigh in on this at all?
I, I'd rather not because, but this is something that we've discussed prior. Prosecutor's going to get his own server. We're going to move all the people over and they're going to be off of the county servers.
Right.
Can I make a point towards that?
Sure can.
Thank you. Uh, no, um, we're trying to save money where we can. So, uh, between our 23 budget and this year's budget, our budget overall increased about 2% between '23 and '24. But through some moving things, some things around, we were able to save about $15,000 uh, between last year and this year. So we cut $15,000, give or take from our general fund portion in our main budget, which is our 108. And then also, uh, we've taken steps to, to take on, use our incentive funds to pay for certain things we use within the 4D, within child support. So 10 to $15,000 a year we spend in postage, usually. I think the commissioners may have paid for that. There was talk about that. So we bought our own postage machine and we're going to take over using those incentive funds to pay, so the county doesn't have to pay for our mailings within our, uh, child support program. That's about 10 to $15,000. So about $30,000 we have managed to save between '23 and '24. And projected over a 10-year period will be about 100 to $150,000 in posted savings toward the general fund county budget. So we're, uh, and as you'll notice, we're asking for not to exceed $60,000 for the server. So that's, we've managed to save about $30,000 right there, uh, for the county. So we're trying to do what we can to cut, to cut expenses where we don't need to.
That's good because at a time where we've had to add money to the postage, that'll come in nice. Thank you. Mr. Yagowski?
Question? Um, Mr. Prosecutor, the, sorry, I just had a brain fart of your, the ones we gave the raises to, who, for that group? As you gave the raise to?
4D.
Child support. Oh, you mean the bonus?
Bonus.
Yes. So there's four, these, so what percentage of four D would use this? Equipment? I'm asking this for a reason.
Oh, we, well, all, anything that we spend incentive funds money on has, oh.
His question is, how many employees?
About twenty, twenty-something people in four D.
Would be using?
Thirteen, thirteen.
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 Would be utilizing this equipment.
So this was prior, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is that correct?
Correct. So this was prior to your, uh, coming to office. We didn't, because of paperwork and everything else, we never got a fair share of the money coming to the county for the, for the Michigan City. So what I'm asking for is, can we take a percentage of this, of this money and, and take it out of their funds? Because it's hard to spend that money pers- on certain things.
Mr. Yagowski, I would recommend that we get his server set up, and we look, and we look at that next year.
For paying maybe the ongoing costs?
The ongoing seats for four D. Because we want to, we, we need to get this server set up now, and we can't commit his four D funds for that. Just please take my statement as gospel.
Okay. And, and to also, in refer, in reference to, uh, something Mr. DiMartino said about Maximus earlier, there are three incentive funds that the county gets, one is for prosecutor's office, one is for the clerk's office, one is a portion that the county has that can only be spent on, uh, four D stuff, so that may be something, if there are no budgeted funds for Maximus, then you can use incentive funds to cover a portion of that. You can't replace it just per se, because then you, you have to pay it back, because that's, that's a no-no. There's some, and for every dollar that you spend on child support, you get sixty-seven percent reimbursement, so we spend about a million dollars, give or take, for on our child support program. We br, we get, the county only really spends thirty-three hu, or thirty-three thousand, or three hundred and thirty thousand, just give or take. And so what we bring in, about eight to ten million dollars in collections. So we're trying to be, it's just efficiency, but just to go to that concern about Maximus, uh, which actually is a program designed to look for cost savings and reimbursement stuff, so they look for, oh, well, we can save money here, is this a reimbursable expense? So you can use four D monies in, in regular budgeted monies, in a kind of a weird fashion, but once you get, if you mess with the formula too much, you can, uh, you'd have to pay it back.
Correct. We don't want to get in that position.
Motion to approve out of wind tax.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say, oh, go ahead.
What is the balance in wind tax right now?
That, it's about twenty-five percent of what's in wind tax.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion bans at four to two.
And just so you know,
Five to two.
Come, come next year, those fifty-five seats that are going to the prosecutor's office will come off of our IT. You know, their license, their fifty-five seats, so it'll, it'll work out. Again, thank you.
Anything to my question, thank you.
The next item is request additional appropriation from Public Safety Lit, uh, to cover the, tax thing, tax cost for the employee that's in there. Want to talk?
Well, we, I just want to say, we, we made an offer, uh, we interviewed somebody last Wednesday, made an offer, uh, to them. This, this, uh, this person is a local, a female, so has a military veteran, has, uh, years of experience with the state police and, uh, uh, another department, uh, is a local to LaPorte County, and is also, uh, a licensed attorney, so. And to talk about four D incentive funds, so the, the, the budget, the position is budgeted out of Public Safety Lit for fifty, fifty grand. But using incentive funds, we're able to, to add, to supplement that salary. The reason why we're doing that, one is two-fold. One, we're pushing aggressively on some things related to child support. We're trying to rampant, rampant up, uh, issues related to felony non-support, criminal charges, which are level six, and if repeated action is a level five, so we're trying, and, and to be quite frank, we can't hire viable candidates at fifty grand, so in order to get most bang for our buck and to use this person in, in a number of different ways, because this person has a lot of things that they can do, frankly, uh, we supplemented with the incentive funds, which are not tax dollars. So, uh, we, we, we were able to find a, a very good candidate for, for less than what? Hiring a full-on deputy or someone, I mean, for, why would someone leave, you know, we could hire someone from the sheriff's office or one of these municipal departments for, uh, for about the same price, but why would, would they want to leave their, those things from a municipal or the sheriff's office when they can, they can work for prosecutor's office, so? And the only way, way we're able to do that is because of, you know, moving funds around and using, using things, uh, that we have available without costing the taxpayer more than
Great.
Uh, taxes, so.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
This is new, hi Randy, right? It's not a new position, it's a replacement position.
Yeah, the, 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 just, and we've talked about this before, but there only, there's only one position that can never be uh, unappropriated by the, in a prosecutor's office, by the council, and that is the investigator position. There's case law, and there's statute on it, where once you fund it, it has to be funded. The only way you can unappropriate it is by mutual consent of both of us, so. But this position was in the budget in twenty-three and twenty-two, and was approved for this year as well. So it's not, it's a replace, it, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mullenhour.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Five to.
Three, four, three.
Four three. Mark voted no?
Yes.
Okay, alright, four three, I'm sorry. Building maintenance has been removed from the agenda. Next item is LaPorte County Jail requesting appropriation, additional appropriation from Public Safety Lit. Is, eh, eh, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just, the next item, we're taking it away from somebody.
Excuse me, yes.
Do we just do these both at the same time?
Yes, it was supposed to be for the jail, but we, I accidentally put it under the sheriff, I believe, is how that happened.
Right. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to do the reversal and the appropriation of the hundred thousand dollars. We get it in the rank.
Motion to combine.
Make sure that we have this, uh, correct, Mr. President. It's not an additional appropriation, it's a transfer.
Correct.
Not a transfer, it's a disappropriation and then an appropriation.
Right.
Transfer. Well, essentially it's a transfer, except for it's not too much.
Unappropriated. Unappropriated. Moving around, that's all.
Where's the motion?
Um, Mr. Karanka made the motion.
Motion by Adam.
I'll second. Uh, Mr. Hill.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item, you'll see in your packet also, just like with the health department, item one through four is requesting appropriations to establish a budget from previously non-budgeted funds in the, um, with the.
Motion to approve all four. Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Pioneer Cemetery, request an additional appropriation from the general fund or other funds to correct fund twenty-three hundred in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. Would you like to speak on this?
Sure. Um, what happens is, that is part of the levy, but for some reason, the levy was removed years ago, and I don't know if it wasn't noticed, but it was never put back on, so basically, they ran out of funds this year. Um, from the budget, you may remember, but we did put ninety-five thousand on the levy, so they should be fine going forward as long as we watch it, but, um, last year, they became negative that amount, fifteen, three, forty, seventy-five.
You put ninety-five on the levy?
Yes.
What is their annual expenditures, is it about the ninety-five?
No, I'm gonna say it's about twenty-two, so they'll probably need to be adjusted, but that's what was on it this year.
Okay.
So we're gonna collect ninety-five thousand, but yet we still have to give them fifteen.
You're not supposed to go through the end of the year negative, so we're trying to correct all the funds, is what we were told. If you choose not to.
Motion to deny.
To.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Yagowski and Mr. Rosenbaum to deny.
So discussion.
Some discussion.
Since we're correcting twenty-twenty-three expenditures, has, if it's, hasn't already been shored up, and this is a formality, does it, what does it do to us other than an audit finding potential?
Cause I mean, all the bills were paid.
Yeah.
It doesn't do anything.
Nothing. Correct, just an audit finding.
Like you.
I'm okay with that, I just know that we're gonna, if, if we've got a levy, that's gonna be far more than what their normal expenses are. I don't want to start taking money and applying it and putting it somewhere when we know it's gonna correct itself in a few months. That's, that's my thing. We're trying to be smart for the end of the year on the general fund, to keep replenishing in every step that we take towards that. And you'll see, as we get to the next one, the, the suggestion on the next one.
Yep. I did take a look at the, the county's approved budget order, which I printed off with me. Um, our certified budget for the cemetery fund is eight, forty-three thousand five hundred and ten. Our certified levy, which is what we're requesting, doesn't mean that we'll collect all that, is eighty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. So if we over-collect in our levy, more than what we're budgeting, it should solve this issue of having a negative balance there, as soon as we get our tax draws, correct? So there may be little consequence from us not approving this additional appropriation.
Correct, good.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Must deny. Next item is LaPorte County E nine one one, request an additional appropriation from Public Safety Lit, Riverboat Wind Tax or ARP for the service charge for the phone system.
I'd like to make a motion out of Public Safety Lit for a one-year contract of eighty-two thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. There's not a significant savings over a five-year plan to spend to pay it all, and in an effort to keep over three hundred thousand dollars towards the end of the year, um, that is the reason for my motion at eighty-two two fourteen.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Karanka.
You're proposing on a Public Safety Lit, correct?
Yes, I did.
This will put us into a negative balance if we're still to pay the sheriff's pension out of that. There's currently five hundred and nineteen thousand in there roughly, five hundred and twenty thousand, yeah, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in additional, uh, costs that we did not budget for the sheriff.
That comes up when we get a final number, and that, we can make an adjustment to pay from two places.
We get a final number, what would be the final number?
Well, I don't have it in my packet here, so we got a number before last month, but I don't have it in my packet here.
Some of the amounts available to appropriate a second?
No, not that. You mentioned something else, you mentioned
Sheriff's pension?
The sheriff's pension. We appropriated one point four million, we believe it's gonna be closer to one point eight million.
Correct, so we're anticipating to spend that on a Public Safety Lit, correct? Where do we pla, plan to pay for the one point eight million for the?
When that comes up, we'll have to deal with Public Safety Lit.
So if we're planning to pay it from Public Safety Lit, if we approve, uh, eighty-some thousand?
So where would you suggest that we take the money from?
ARP?
No.
Any of the other funds listed?
And just so everybody knows, this is
You're not gonna be able to pay the sheriff's pensions if you spend this now.
Out of Public Safety Lit, doesn't mean I can't pay it. I mean, years ago, we used to always take it out of Riverboat.
You don't have the money in your fund to cover eighty-two thousand dollars a year?
No.
Not a, let me look, let me check, not a
I'll look for it.
Let me think about that.
It, it will go up.
I know, you're going into negative anyway, so.
Yeah.
Alright, so what's your pleasure after the discussion?
Aye.
No, I wonder what's your vote?
I'm not changing.
Mark.
Must be a game on tonight or something.
No.
Just kidding.
What's the question?
No, I've just, because there's discussion about this.
Thought we're done with the council, okay.
Sorry, made a motion, we have it approved, and I decided not to change it.
All those in favor, Public Safety Lit for the eighty?
Two thousand?
Two hundred and fourteen.
Two hundred and fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Next item is request a motion of support from Public Safety Lit for ten thousand dollars for the annual contract for Pulse Point. And just for clarification, this is a motion of support, because it would need to be put into the lit budget in July, August, whenever we have our meeting, because the Healthcare Foundation is paying for the first year, so this would not be due till twenty-twenty-five.
Correct, and they're gonna pay for the, uh, initial setup fee and the first year.
Everything. And this, this is for, so if everyone knows, this is for the, uh, the AEDs. The Healthcare Foundation has, I think, provided two hundred and some AEDs throughout the county, but, um, there's an app on your phone that if you're a first responder, no CPR, you can sign up for this, and if there's a heart attack, let's say in this room, eh, eh, and you're next door at the courthouse, it'll tell you, hey, there's a heart attack at the courthouse, at the complex, go over there, there's an AED outside the women's bathroom.
It tells you exactly where, no matter where, if there's an AED close, this, this
Correct.
Will tell you where the AED is.
Yep.
Within a quarter of a mile.
And it'll notify you within, if you're within that radius, right.
Quarter of a mile.
Anybody that signs up for it, that no CPR.
Then you're in the residence, in the private residence.
Correct. They're in the process of getting the city of LaPorte Heart Safety certified, gonna be the first one, the state of Indiana, and then
But we're gonna do this for countywide.
And then we're doing this countywide, right. Thanks.
Will there be statistics on how much this is used? This does seem kinda like an expensive contract for something that may or may not get used.
As far as how much we're gonna use it, so we're, there's others in the, uh, state currently that use it already, it's used, uh, quite frequently. Um, I think in the packet I, I, I sent you, there was a lot of statistics, um, on what it saves. When it comes down to CPR, if you have, um, it takes roughly, in the city of LaPorte, which is where we've been doing all our work, roughly three to four minutes to get an ambulance to you. Um, you have about six minutes to survive. Um, so if we can get somebody in this building to start CPR on you, get an AED on you, you're changed, so survival goes up, uh, almost fifty percent, so it may not be used for everybody, but there's some incentives to get other people. Uh, one of the other things that it does, uh, for the public to keep them interested, is show you if, um, there's a, a fire truck out on Lincoln Way, uh, it would explain that they're there for a, a medical assist call or something. So the public can stay notified of what the fire department, CMS, is doing, so, um, they knew that if, if this apple and it went off twice a year, it's not gonna get used, so they, they put in a lot of other stuff to keep the people, um, signed up and using it.
Thank you.
Where does somebody, say myself, go to get, uh, trained and registered to be adequate to run this? To be You are? Yes. Currently, the city of LaPorte Fire Department, um, is having, uh, a health, health foundation, not healthcare, health foundation, uh, supported, um, CPR classes, um, and I know that the commissioners have asked, uh, EMS to
EMS is gonna provide it for every building that has a AED in it, they're gonna come around and give tra, at least training on the AED, the minimum training, which would be how to operate that, then you can take steps up, and there's many different levels of CPR, so.
So, eh, I'm just gonna add that I did take the, just a couple weeks ago, I took the training, um, through the fire department on Eighteenth Street.
You got a car?
And I didn't get the car jacked, cause it's two weeks, you know, to get that, so we're just around that time.
So when you have to give me a heart attack, it should be the first one.
We're just
Hey, Mark, how do you like to do this?
Turn your mic on. You're gonna talk, you turn your mic on, and you'll get your Snickers bar later.
I think they're, uh, it's like three to four thousand a year, the city of LaPorte's putting through right now, resident.
Correct.
Part of this initiative that they're doing, it's, it's three to four thousand a year that they are, but, um, with what they're donating in, in AEDs and also the, the play for Jake and everybody involved, it's, it's a lot of different people, so. And again, like you said, it's for the city of LaPorte now, but eventually, we hope as soon as we get this, she submitted the packet this week, right? Uh, we hope to go then next, uh, for the whole entire county.
And in the, in the county just installed, maintenance just installed twenty-three AEDs, because there's three left for floor, four, three, four, five.
Yeah, standard, and one for each floor.
One for each floor, so, yeah.
Roughly ninety seconds, they want you to be able to get your hands on an AED.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Dude, we don't have a motion yet.
Nope, there's no motion.
I, I could've got a vote without a motion, see?
Yes.
Who are you interfering? Is there a motion? Thought after all that talk, we had
Motion of support for ten thousand dollars indicating, eh, this is for twenty-twenty-five, right?
Correct.
On ARP, or Public Safety Lit.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item at the top of the sheet, but the hundred and twenty-six dollars was removed. Next item is community corrections, request an appropriation for project fund income. These are appropriations out of funds that, that are currently yours, we're just appropriating your money?
Yes.
For twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-five? This is, this is part of the funds for that vehicle that she came to us for last year.
Could you explain why it went up?
Well, we were told by the, uh, commissioners that we only could purchase American cars, and so the cars that we purchased were twelve thousand dollars more than what we had originally asked for.
Mr. Yagowski? I'll let you field that.
Yeah, I knew I was going to. So, forty-eight years in the steel mills. Uh, I talked to Mr. Yagowski, and I talked to the commissioners, all separate, all three of them. That terminology is not used anymore, because we sell the Toyota, Volkswagen, everybody else. There's a, there's a statement, it's a bad statement to make, to, to say, if you want to have a car that was, that, that is manufactured, because Ford, for example, manufactured cars in Mexico and Canada. So, I, I'm not going in favor of this one, I retold the commissioners this, that this, that they don't need this increase, that, that they need to follow the rules, what So the steelworker, I talked to the head of the Steelworkers Union, and he told me myself, he goes, Mark, absolutely, we endorse that you're gonna buy cars from Volkswagen or something, as long as it's American-made steel, so
Manufactured.
Manufactured in the United States. So, this makes no sense to me, I tried to correct it.
Did you already purchase it?
It don't prevail. It don't prevail.
So just an add-on comment. Sure. Let's look at Lafayette. Right, Lafayette, they've got a Subaru plant.[1741.98]
That's what I'm backing on, right?
Yeah.
So the steelworkers endorse this comp, and he's a, he's a steelworkers, so I tried to explain it to him. It might, it's, that's all I'm gonna say.
I agree with Mr. Yagowski's position. Just because it's a foreign company doesn't mean it's not made in America with American workers and American parts. That being said, if we don't vote to approve this, what will happen?
We won't get the vehicle.
But you've already purchased the other vehicles and this one's on hold.
They're just holding it because we went over twelve thousand.
They're asked what kind of vehicle, what brand?
Chevy Malibus, twenty-three.
What was the additional cost by going this route?
Thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
What was the original cost?
I just checked in.
Twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars less.
That's exactly what I want. It's like a figure of percentage. It's like.
How much were the car?
Ten thousand.
How much?
A hundred and ten thousand.
For three. How many car?
Five.
Five cars. You should went to Hyundai, didn't you? Weren't they Honda's?
Were they smaller vehicles than the Malibus?
Yes.
They are.
Yes, they are. More economical.
I I don't know about that, but they were.
They are.
Smaller vehicle.
Do you have a ten-year warranty too?
Here's, here's, here's the position we're in, and I think we need to send a notice to the commissioners about what the difference between buying American and American manufactured in America. Because this item just cost, this is grant money, this isn't county.
Private income money.
So this is money that's generated from her funds, but it just took four, twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
It's my misinformation too, unfortunately, and that's the best way to explain it. I tried to explain to the commissioners.
I disagree with what the commissioners did, but I hate to punish you for that.
Could we tie the motion of support to a letter from our attorney that the council was in agreement that we should not confuse the terminology?
And then can you clarify that? What you, can you, Mr. Di Martino?
Yeah, he just looks so happy.
Mr. Yagowski with the cr- terminology on that?
I didn't say nothing. That was Mr. Cunningham.
No, 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 but I'm saying.
Are you gonna, are you all really gonna fight this battle?
We just don't want him to, we don't want him doing it again to.
Well, next time, next time they don't do it. When she comes, you don't give her the money.
She has to go to the commit, I know.
No, we gave her the money for the other vehicles and then they stopped it.
Then we're punishing her for their actions.
It shouldn't have happened.
Mr. Di Martino, what about, what about if it wasn't this case? What about the sheriff? We're talking about a million dollars of cars now. So I know this is only three cars. It's of their will. I'm sorry, okay, I apologize.
So you want me to, you want me to write them a letter and they're gonna listen to me?
I didn't write this. I did.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that. I tried. They didn't listen to me, so.
We'll send them, yeah.
It's like our family. They don't listen to me.
Hope they don't watch the meetings.
I will, I will communicate it to the commissioners. With Guy Di Martino and Mr. Yagowski.
I think it can be an email. I don't care. Evidence that you.
Is there a motion, is there a motion?
I got.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
I got a question.
Sure.
Is there a way to tell, is there some printed publication that's, or whatever, that says which cars, from which makes, models have American-made steel? Is that, is that?
I I can contact United Steelworkers of America, ask if they would get us that list for me.
His department heads kind of need that, don't they?
I mean, sure, you could do a query on where there's.
The salary side, I'm not gonna, they, we work all the time together.
I'm sure there's a query we can do to just find out which American-made assembly plants exist as well, which would be another avenue.
Makes two, two of their cars in Mexico, so they would be willing to buy that. I don't understand their.
Jeep does also.
All right. What do you want to do with the twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Karanka, seconded by Mr. Cunningham. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays.
It's, it's, we're trying to send a little bit of a message, but we totally know that you're in the situation you're in.
You want me to change my vote to a nay, so it's a bigger message?
You do what your heart desires.
If you want to send a message, just pick twelve thousand dollars out of the commissioner's budget and unappropriately.
Ooh.
They're probably walking right now, aren't they?
They probably are.
Yep. Next item is request transfer from health insurance to professional services in the amount of forty-six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Karanka. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Next item is request transfer.
We pull that off.
We pulled this last one off, eight oh nine?
Oh, no, we didn't. I'm sorry, we did not. I.
Request transfer from office supplies to cover taxes and other expenses for the officers in the amount of eight hundred and nine dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Karanka. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
I did just want to briefly bring something up. You all had given us a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for our GPS units. And when we went in and reallocated our money for our grant, we were able to not use all of that money, so we only used half of it. So half of it went back to the county.
It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Did that happen before December thirty-first?
Sorry about the cars.
You should've told us that before you asked.
Start with the good news.
Sorry about the cars. Sorry about what we got messaged.
Right. Next item is Laporte County Courts. This is for the jury fees that have never been appropriated in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. We need to appropriate some money for that.
Was that just never appropriated for twenty twenty-four? Never appropriated for the last ten years?
It was, it was never appropriated prior to this, so we're trying to appropriate some money for this year.
I'm just asking, so how were they paying it prior to that?
They just paid it out of the general.
At the end of the year, the auditor's office would take it out of unappropriated general.
What was paid last year?
Just short of a.
It was paid at the end of twenty-two from unappropriated general. But if you remember, last year you appropriated the negative because it went in the negative, was it eighty-seven thousand dollars?
Just added ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I remember a discussion somewhere in the order of twenty-five thousand dollars just recently, the last three months.
Yes, last year there was an appropriation, but that expires December thirty-first. Appropriations do. So this was just taken. For twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve fifty thousand dollars out of Riverboat and also ask that this be added on to the budget when we get to the budget season.
Whose budget will we attach it to?
Well, for for one thing, this year, we're gonna get to see how much money are gonna be collected because of the new fees with the CT cases and the PL cases. So budget time, it'll have a better, and you can, you can ask one of the judges.
Right, we'd have to tack.
Yeah, tack it to one of the superior courts.
The attachment to circuit.
Way it would be out of general.
Circuit has a lot of things.
We'll do Alves's court. He's leaving anyway.
All right, we have a motion out of Riverboat. And to add it to our budget.
Sure, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Karanka. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Just one?
Nay.
Would you like, would you like more?
If I ask again, do I get another one? All right, five two. Next one is Laporte County Labs Program, request an additional appropriation on a general fund. Riverboat or Wind Tax or ARP to cover the twenty twenty-three budget for Fund twenty-five oh two in the amount of one hundred thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents. Would you like to explain?
Sure. So the way they read the statute prior was that, well, I know that the council budgets twenty-five oh two, but no funds come into it except for user fee funds. So it should be used as a supplemental account, just like the jury pay fund. But the way they read the statute prior was that they use that budget and then fix it with a general fund. So all of these years, the auditor's office has been using a letter from the judge to, that says, fix, I don't know, however they word it. So they've been taking from unappropriated general that difference. And what should be happening is it should be budgeted in general and then supplemented with their user fee funds. So they have a budget of about one eighty-five and they bring in about eighty-five in user fee funds this year. But you, it doesn't cover that. So we could have done that, but the proper way is for you to be aware of what's happening and appropriate it, not just us do it on our own.
Why is general? What's your pleasure?
And I did add the general to this because there there were extra funds deposited. So if you want to do it from general, there's actually a little excess because of interest in that last year.
You added the, okay.
The general fund is one of those, yeah.
So there's enough money in the general fund to budget this?
There is enough money in the general fund to cover this number. And then at the end of this year, you're gonna have to do it again from wherever there are funds at that time. But in the future, it needs to be budgeted from general.
We need to correct it at budget time.
Correct. Yes.
Motion to prove the one hundred thousand, one hundred thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents from the general fund.
There's a motion by Mr. Keel. Sure, a second? Sure, a second? Sure, a second?
Let's go to the second.
We have a second by Mr. Karanka. Discussion?
Yeah, I would have liked to have an answer before in the packet, cause there's a couple of things that we didn't have any idea. And having to have to go and bother you to go get the answer was.
But here's the best.
I've emailed about this one, if that's what you're talking about specifically, but.
All right.
I didn't see it, so.
Based off of the hesitation for the second, I have a feeling this is otherwise going to fail. What happens if it fails?
By statute, it has to be paid, so it's not really one that you can make it fail. It has to be paid by statute.
But it's gonna get paid anyway.
I mean, you need to appropriate it, so I'm not going to authorize it without your authorization.
It's been paid for the last umpteen years without ARP authorization.
Which is why it needs your approval, because we are not supposed to make that choice.
Is there a different fund that?
Yeah, we advertise for different funds if you want to.
No, I'm asking these guys.
I mean, there's objection to the general fund, pick a different fund.
And I'm just looking at how we're trying to salvage some kind of operating balance at the end of the year out of the general. But then you look at the the other available funds, wind taxes, I don't think we've got enough left there to do it. Same with Riverboat.
And one of the main reasons I added the general was if it would have been done without permission, that's where it would have come from. I'm not saying that's right by any means.
Correct me if I'm wrong. If we, if we vote this down and we take no action, you're gonna pay it out of general.
I, we're not going to.
Somebody's gonna take that money out of the general. It's gonna get paid.
Not without your permission, no.
Or a court order, which the judges will do all the time anyway.
And it'll come out.
I think in the past, the judges have not actually done a court order. They were just doing a letter to us.
Correct.
They treated it as if it were a court order.
Yes.
Problem is, that's what they'll do if they have to get it paid. Some judge is gonna order.
It's just not a true court order. So truthfully, it should be done by council or not at all.
They're gonna do it anyways, then what's, what's the difference? At least this, this way, it's incorporated into the budget process.
Bottom line is, it's gonna come out of the general. So. All right. All those in favor of the general fund, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Yep.
I'm sorry, four, three in favor, correct?
Very cool.
Roll call please.
Roll call please.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mollinour.
Aye.
And Councilman, and what's it, Gardner? Karaka.
Wow.
Justin, you should be Gardner on this list.
Aye.
Four to three.
Just four to three.
I, thank you. We just didn't hear four ayes before, so.
I wanted to be sure.
Request to encumber. Is that on?
There was an attachment sent with all of the amounts that have been encumbered.
That's right. Six million dollars.
And not printed out, I don't think.
Is this something you need our approval for?
I'm sorry?
Is this something you need our approval for?
By statute, it's supposed to come through council. And I've seen it on past, I don't know how long ago it's been, but I have seen it on past.
We've never done it, but.
When Joey was in office, it was on the agendas because I found where she had done it.
Someone says.
Yes, yes. Easy on the cops.
So you're supposed to be aware of those.
Are these included in the packet that was delivered?
Yeah.
No, they were not ready until the day of the twenty-second. So on the twenty-second, I emailed them, actually. And I can.
Can you say not ready? It's because the departments are bringing them in.
All right.
Yeah, the departments are bringing them in and then the.
The table by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Yagowski. All those in favor, table and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Council attorney comments, an attorney comment.
Your right leg is crapping.
Oh, I was like, man, he's late already.
Scammy, scammy, jumping to have a comment.
All right. I thought he was walking out this like.
Man, he must say, we're not done yet.
Somebody get the AED.
Any comments? Any comments from the council?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Go for it.
Got one. Sure. I'd like to ask Mr. Di Martino to look into the history and composition of the county's or the council's insurance committee. As far as I can find, I can't find any ordinance that ever created it. The meetings aren't held publicly. There's all these issues with insurance. Let's make sure it's set up right and that it's proper oversight.
Where'd you get this?
And where do you think I am gonna find this paperwork, Mr. Keel?
Good question. I'm guessing you won't find it and then you'll tell us that we should approve an ordinance to set up this committee.
President. She always serves, she's going to the commissioners, fine. If it's not there, you're not gonna be able to find it. He can't find it, nobody else can. They'll find it. I'll ask Diane. Have you asked Diane?
I've not asked Diane. I just tried everything that I got, fine, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send an email.
Thank you.